All right, good morning, everyone. I'd like to start by recognizing that the CVRD is on the unceded territories of the Kowachin, Malahat, Suboxa, Halalt, Penelica, Semenous, Lax, and Pocketchin, Apache Nation. And with the quorum being present, I'll call this meeting to order. Before we get started, just want to recognize we have three alternate directors joining us this morning. Alternate Director Askew, welcome.
Yeah, and there's not even much for finance on any--
Okay, so I think somebody's mic is on mute. All right. Alternate Director Duncan and Alternate Director Finley, welcome. All right, our first item of business here is approval of the agenda. Would someone like to move that we approve the agenda? Moved by Director McGonigal, seconded by Director Manhas, all in favor and opposed, non-opposed, motion carries. Now move on to the minutes. We have before us the minutes from the Committee of the Whole Meeting of July 9th. Some like to move that these be adopted. Moved by Director Nicholson, seconded by Director Justice, all in favor and opposed, non-opposed, motion carries. Will now move on to public input period. Public input period is to offer the public an opportunity to comment on an agenda item before the committee considers the item. The public input period procedure policy allows for allotment of 15 minutes where the speaker is welcome to comment on any items on the agenda up to a maximum of three minutes. This excludes items that are or have been the subject of a public hearing. Input from the community is valued and appreciated, and we request that input is presented in a friendly and respectful manner. So I'll turn to the gallery and see if you can state your name and address.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kim Bernard, Shawnigan Lake, Area B. I would like to speak to R1 this morning and to offer feedback as a local resident and someone who's busy planning a staycation here in the Cowatchin Valley. The subject is tourism, and I'd like to speak to the report, just to say that it was very thorough and gave me lots of ideas on how the outward marketing is being done. However, the mission is to promote a thriving local region that-- let me just read this-- "economic and social benefits of a thriving tourism industry through focused, industry-driven, and professionally managed marketing." And what I'm here to advocate for is that the locals be employed in this work because we are the ambassadors of our region, and we need training on how to welcome visitors and also to prepare for the influx should this marketing be as successful as hoped. So what I found when I visited the visitor center-- this is also something-- feedback for the committee-- is that there was very little on Shawnigan Lake. It was amazing. I looked at this flagship publication, the Cowatchin one, and in the beginning, there's a picture of an incredible destination, Old Mount Baldy, but absolutely no guidance on how to get there and to recreate that experience for visitors. Next up, I looked at the other flagship marketing piece, which is the Vancouver Island Visitor. And when I turned to page 20, which is a list-- a comprehensive list, I might add-- of all the South Island communities, Shawnigan Lake got missed. Mill Bay, Bamerton, Cobble Hill, they're all there, but Shawnigan Lake is not listed. So it was really interesting, and again, a feedback from a local. Two of the wonderful publications that I thought represented our collaborations here in the valley-- so maybe you've seen this one. There's even a personal message from the mayor, Mayor Beeston. So, "Well done on everyone who collaborated on this," and there's wonderful suggestions, really practical hints for visitors on how to experience the beauty of our valley. But lastly, I would like to say the winner for frugality and the knowledge that comes from locals. So the people who live, work, and play in our valley produced this visitor guide for Lake Cowatchin. I absolutely love it. I love that it was printed on newsprint through the Gazette, and knowledgeable journalists like Sarah Simpson and Kevin Rothbauer and team produced this with really beautiful summaries of all of the amenities and venues. I mean, it's just thematic, it's gorgeous, it's very easy to follow, and I hope this represents the future of our tourism outreach. Thank you. And please do consider the ambassador program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jessica.
Seeing no other members of the public in the gallery, I think we can now move on from public input to reports. We have first a report from the Economic Development Division regarding the MRDT 2024 Annual Performance and Finance Reports. Over to you, Mr. O'Reardon.
Good morning, Chair and Directors. Good to be here. As you see, the purpose of this report is to provide an update on the Municipal and Regional District 2024 Annual Performance and Financial Reports. This is a for information report that will be accompanied by a presentation from Tourism Couchin's Kenzie Knight. Just to provide a little introduction context, typically Tourism Couchin presents to the CVRD Board once during the year in advance of the November 30th submission to the forward-looking MRDT Tactical Plan and Budget. So today's report and presentation is an additional opportunity for the Board and Tourism Couchin to engage, this time focused on the backward-looking 2024 annual work plan that has been completed. And then while not the main topic of this report, you'll also see the Affordable Housing MRDT Report for 2024 in your package for reference. And this one in 2024, MRDT Online Accommodation Platform Revenue-- so that's Airbnbs and VRBOs, et cetera-- were directed from that year to affordable housing initiatives in the region via Couchin Housing Association, just to reference that. And then just in terms of financials, in 2024 Tourism Couchin operations were supported by the 120,000 contribution from the CVRD, 158,000 in leveraged funds from Destination BC, as well as the MRDT funds, the general revenue, which comes from hotel stays in the region of just over 480,000. And 2024 revenues expenditures exceeded revenues for that year, resulting in a drawdown of the surplus that was present previously from 2023. And that surplus is continuing to be drawn down in the plan for 2025, just to reference that. And then it's also worth noting that the MRDT funds, the province has directed their incremental to other sources of tourism funding, meaning they should not be used to replace existing funding, but rather to enhance and expand tourism initiatives. So I'll hand you over to Tourism Couchin now. And Kenzie, for the presentation, I'll be here, and Kenzie will be available afterwards for any questions. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me here today. I am, as Barry mentioned, going to provide an overview of the 2024 programs and initiatives, a highlight of the MRDT work that was done this past year. Apologies if some of you may have received a similar presentation, as we've been doing council presentations in the recent months, so it might be a little bit of a duplicate. Just wanted to jump right in here and provide an overview on the snapshot of how the revenues have changed year after year. So for general MRDT, which is the fixed-- the traditional fixed roof accommodation that comes from hotels, we saw a 4% increase from 2023 to 2024. And for the OAP, the Online Accommodation Platform Revenue, which comes from platforms like VRBO and Airbnb, there was a 44% increase from 2023 to 2024. The general MRDT revenues are directed towards Tourism Couchin for marketing, industry engagement, and destination development work, whereas the OAP revenues fund affordable housing projects through Economic Development Couchin and their partnership with Couchin Housing Association. Obviously, looking ahead, we will be monitoring the OAP revenues and how the short-term rental regulations coming into effect will impact those, but we are expecting a decline in this next year. The Fall Campaign was your official invitation to visit Cowatchin. It ran from September to December, targeting BC and Alberta markets with book now messaging. We leveraged our brand positioning of warm hearts, open arms, and simple pleasures. And this campaign really allowed us to address the visitor as if it was a personal invitation into the region. Some of the key marketing tactics included CTV television commercials, connected TV ads, both in-stream and pause ads, radio ads, email marketing, and paid search. The CTV commercials resulted in over 8 million impressions, and the paid social media campaigns that went alongside that resulted in over 3 million impressions and quite a substantial increase in followers on our social media channels. We also partnered with CFAX Radio to deploy radio ads to the Victoria market, which was targeting more of a staycation contest to come up and visit the region. We'll see if the audio works here, but just wanted to provide a look at the 15-second Fall Campaign commercial that was run on CTV. Well, no audio there, but there is a link in the packet, so if you want to take a look at that afterwards, you're more than welcome to. There is some storytelling that overlays on the video to go alongside that. The sponsored content was used in collaboration with different media outlets on the Lower Mainland, primarily Vancouver's Awesome, Curiosity, and now media based more in the Okanagan region to expand visibility across our regional audiences. So here's just some visual examples of some sponsored content that was run for the Fall Campaign. This past year, we also partnered with BC Fairies to install tabletop vinyl ads onboard the vessels, as well as in terminal posters and on vessel posters to highlight the campaign messaging to those markets as well. In April, we hosted Mona from CTV to film six community spotlight segments for the region on Vancouver Morning News, so those segments aired in May. To highlight various communities and tourism attractions throughout the region, we also recorded four radio segments with Anthony Gizmandi and BC Food &amp; Wine Radio, which aired between April to October to over 20 different radio markets across the province with a network reach of about 220,000 listeners per week. A large focus of the spring and summer of 2024 was content development for the Spring 2025 Campaign, which was called Down to Earth. So Tourism Couchin worked with a local content creator to create a new video for the region titled "Welcome to the Most Down to Earth Place on Earth." This video really used a human-centric storytelling approach. We interviewed-- featured local community members in the video, asking them what it means-- what the Couchin means "down to earth" to them. And so it featured various kind of experiences across culinary, agritourism, outdoor adventure, and arts and culture. The full-length video is five minutes. Since the audio is not working, I'm not going to play this one, but you're welcome to look at that outside of this. Over the year, we also hosted four influencer trips to tap into new audiences and to create seasonal content for storytelling. So our fall and spring themed content was targeted to Vancouver, Victoria, and Washington markets. These four reels resulted in over 88,000 views on Instagram and a noticeable increase to our social media following, which kind of demonstrates the impact of influencer-led storytelling to expand reach. We also partnered with a local writer and mountain biker, Matthew Wanbon, to create a blog post and short-form video to highlight shoulder season mountain biking and camping opportunities. We worked with The Nature Educator, a local content creator, to produce a video-- a series kind of highlighting different educational opportunities, both to locals and to visitors, on topics like the salmon spawn, Couchin ecosystems, kind of local native Couchin plants, to encourage responsible and mindful travel. Image and video projects were completed throughout the year to fill content gaps in various communities. Over 500 new images were acquired, and all of these are made available to our tourism operators for their own use, as well as community partners. A large focus of 2024 was also building out an itinerary builder tool on the consumer website. So it hasn't launched yet. We're nearing completion of this project, but essentially it will allow users to create personalized itineraries or customized curated itineraries built by Tourism Couchin based on their length of stay and their interests and what communities they're planning on staying in. It also provides us on the back end with valuable visitor insights as to the type of trips that folks are planning to the region. So as I mentioned, it's in final stages of creation and will be kind of launched towards the fall here. We attended the Vancouver Outdoor Adventure and Travel Show alongside four Couchin-based tourism operators to generate sales leads and increase brand awareness amongst the Vancouver market. It worked well to bring along some operators alongside us to increase kind of the presence of the Couchin region at the show, and also led to direct bookings for those operators following the show. Last piece on the marketing side that I'll talk about is the Island Taste Trail. This was a campaign that we ran in the fall with surrounding kind of Central Island communities on Vancouver Island. So it ran for three weeks to increase Couchin's visibility in the culinary scene and to highlight kind of local food and drink pairings using local ingredients. So this campaign had participation from 28 different restaurants in the region. Moving to the destination development side of the work, I think most of you are familiar with the Events and Experiences Fund, which is an annual grant program to support tourism marketing for events and festivals that attract visitation and overnight stays to the region. So the program was fully subscribed in 2024 to support 20 different events. Out of those 20 events, about nine of them were new events, so in their first or second year, which is a goal of the program to kind of foster new experiences that also attract people to-- and disperse visitation across different areas of the region. The cycling tourism strategy was initiated at the end of 2024. This was a strategy looking at how to investigate kind of tourism growth opportunities surrounding signature cycling disciplines and experiences, and really try to understand the region's level of support for pursuing cycling tourism and what balanced growth in this sector looks like in coming years. So the first phase of engagement was completed in the earlier part of 2025, which included a public survey, steering committee workshops, and then one-on-one interviews. The project is currently in the second phase of engagement, and the draft strategy will be released to the public in August for feedback. And then the Hotel Needs Assessment was a study we did in partnership with Economic Development Couchin to look at the market and economic potential of hotel development in the region. Really, it'll be utilized as a tool to attract investment. The final report demonstrated that there was additional market potential for 175 rooms-- hotel rooms in the Couchin region, and kind of looked at two different property types, one being a 100-room branded focus service hotel and a 75-room independent resort property. Again, a big challenge in the region, so looking for how we can increase-- yeah, increase the supply of hotel accommodation in the region. Onto industry development, which is the last kind of area I'll speak to. Tourism Couchin hosted a tourism industry workshop and networking lunch earlier in the spring of last year, so providing education to tourism operators on topics like digital marketing, sustainability, how to work with travel media, HR, health and safety, and also concluded with roundtable discussions around how to-- to provide an opportunity for stakeholders to provide input into Tourism Couchin programs and planning for the year coming up. The Couchin Spark Program was a new program we launched last year in partnership with Destination British Columbia and the Tourism Innovation Lab to foster new tourism ideas. So essentially, it was a business incubator program that matched three different entrepreneurs with a seed grant and a tourism mentor to help kind of bring their new tourism ideas to life. So we received 10 applications, and there were three winners selected at the final pitch session in December. Those winners have recently completed their three-month mentorship and now are working on implementation of their tourism ideas. The three winners were Couch-- Lake Couch and Bicycle Rental and Tour Company, as well as Jack and J Creative Space, which is looking at a kind of artisan space where both locals and visitors can come and participate in art workshops and classes. And then building the Couchin Cannabis Trail, so looking at the development of the cannabis tourism sector. The Circular Economy Accelerator Program, Tourism Couchin sponsored two business assessments to provide kind of recommendations to reduce energy, water, and waste emissions, to kind of look at operational efficiencies and cost savings opportunities, and how to localize supply chains. So those assessments were provided for the Mill Bay Marina, Bird's and Spistro location, as well as the Microtel in Oyster Bay. I just wanted to note, coming up in fall 2025, we will be starting regional engagement in advance of the MRDT renewal. So that's-- it's a five-year period, so the renewal is coming up in 2027. So we'll be starting kind of engagement with municipal partners, with local residents and tourism stakeholders in preparation for the renewal. We are also interested in looking at expanding to a 3% collection rate. Currently Tourism Couchin collects at a 2% for the MRDT revenues, so looking at kind of increasing that budget item. Most communities across Vancouver Island are moving towards a 3% collection rate, so we'll be exploring kind of the region's support for that. So I'll leave it there. Thank you for listening.
Great, thank you, Ms. Knight, for the presentation and all your work to promote tourism here in the Couchin region. I will turn to the Committee, but just would note that this is provided for information only. We're not actually being asked to make a decision here. So if you have brief questions requiring clarification, now is the time to ask. However, you have commentary or more detailed questions, I'd encourage you to follow up with staff outside of the meeting. So I'll turn now to-- it just says here, Vice Chair. Director McGonigal.
That would be me. Thank you, Chair. Through you, if I may. You talked about increases in the MRDT. I'm wondering if those increases could be focused not only towards tourism, but towards enticing the need for hotels in the community. We see especially in the West Couchin area the need for accommodation to entice some of those long-term visitors within the region, longer than three or four hours. So just wondering about the complexity of whether or not that could be accommodated.
Yeah, so an eligible use of the MRDT funds is not only tourism marketing, but also destination development. So that kind of work would fit into that bucket of the eligible use that the province sets out. So certainly, that's-- yeah, that's a priority, and I've made a note here to look into that more as well.
Director Justice.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You've obviously got a lot of stuff that you're engaged in. One thing that just caught my attention was that going after the Biosphere Certification through the Responsible Tourism Institute, and the report says that the next step is submitting a Sustainable Tourism Action Plan. Could you talk about that a little bit and how it's being developed, that action plan? And I actually was specifically wondering if you could speak to whether you're working with our staff here that are developing-- doing the regional conservation planning?
Yeah, we haven't actually started that process yet of developing the Sustainability Action Plan. We actually just finished the audit, so the destination kind of goes through an audit, and we did receive the sustainability certification, so we're now certified. So now, kind of in order to maintain that certification, we need to develop-- that we're working towards different sustainability action items. The way Biosphere works is it's based on the United Nations Sustainable Development Goals, so 17 SDGs. So we need to show evidence that how we're working towards each of those areas. Obviously Tourism Couchin can't do that on our own, so we'd be kind of looking at, you know, work that's already existing within the region and how we can support that to kind of, you know, build out different goals across all of, you know, economic sustainability, environmental sustainability, and then kind of the social, cultural side of sustainability as well. So we haven't started that process yet, but yeah, certainly we'll be looking at what's already happening within the region, where there's gaps and where we can support.
All right, thanks.
Alternate Director Finley.
Thank you, Chair. Really like the reports, fantastic. I believe I'm a stakeholder in Tourism Couchin, or I'm not 100% sure, but I used to be anyway. I do have a couple of comments. The little 15-second video that you shared, really cool. It'd be great to have little details at the bottom of what we're seeing, right? So Malahat Skywalk or Cal Bay, you know, Marine, something like that. I think that'd be really interesting for people, because if they're clicking on a video, it'd be like, oh, that's really neat. Where is it? Cowatchin. Okay, where in Cowatchin, right? So if it said Malahat Skywalk, we'd have it. So something like that, I think, on all the digital marketing would be really, really good. I was looking at Attachment D, and it's the OAP MRDT. And if you look at the trend, the number in November 2024 doesn't make sense to me because it's 10 times October and 10 times the year before, and I don't think we had a big event unless we just got a big check cut that time. Is that what happened, Mr. O'Reardon?
Yeah, and that was the province were consolidating some previous data, and so it's not all in that month. It's from the previous year, possibly two years, that they were updating some funds.
Okay, so it's not necessarily 44% increase of OAP, it's just they've paid us a bunch of money that they owe us. Okay, so I have serious concerns about OAP revenue going forward because of the short-term legislation that the province has put in. So this might ruffle some feathers around this table, but that's what I do. I think, you know, opting out of the short-term legislation from the province gives us the ability to have more VRBOs and Airbnbs in the valley, which would then increase the OAP revenue, which would then increase money for affordable housing. So we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot by not doing it, and I think we could open the door to additional revenues moving forward. Thank you.
Director Manhas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a simple question regarding agritourism. I was talking to some farmers over the weekend, and they had some concerns about that the CVRD Board is actually not promoting, not helping them out with the agritourism part. They need to subsidize their revenues and their incomes by agritourism. So are you guys actually engaging with farmers regarding agritourism?
Yes, we are, and we now have Rebecca from Keating Farm on the Board of Directors, who's kind of representing the agritourism sector. I know she's leading a kind of an agritourism collective in the region. So we have more work to do there, for sure, engaging with farmers. I know agritourism is a huge opportunity for the region, but there are still a number of restrictions around the bylaws and what can be-- what can be done on those properties for agritourism use. So there's still some barriers. That's not just in the Couchin region, kind of a problem we see across Vancouver Island. So yeah, that's something we're looking at. I know 4TVI, which is the regional organization for the island, is also looking at doing a agritourism or culinary regional strategy, so looking at how we can kind of come alongside that and maybe do a more localized look at the Couchin Valley as well.
Rebecca's one of the people that approached me over the weekend.
Perfect.
Director Beeston.
Hi. You mentioned going to a 3% collection rate. What is the current collection rate?
2%.
2%. And is that going to be a 3% across the board for the Ben Breakfast VRBOs?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
And for the increases that you mentioned earlier, was that due to a rate increase over the year before or increased collections? Or was it a combination?
Combination of both, yeah. So increased rates as well as the supply.
So the previous increase, was that from like 1% to 2%?
No, we've been collecting at a 2% rate since 2022--
Okay.
--or even before that, 2016, I think.
Okay.
So no, we've-- yeah, we've been at the 2% since--
2018, I believe.
2018.
And have you done any projections, considering the loss of Airbnbs and Ben Breakfast? Have you done any kind of a projection as to the potential loss of income that we're expecting to see due to the closures due to the recent legislation?
We have not, no. We have not, so--
Okay. Do you have actual numbers on the potential loss? Like, just in-- we knew how many sort of Airbnbs and VRBOs that we had a year ago, and I know that in Ladysmith, the number's greatly reduced. So considering from Ladysmith, that's the only hotel we-- or we don't even have a hotel, so you're probably going to see a fairly big drop in those revenues coming from us.
Yeah. So we recently purchased access to AirDNA, which is a data tool to look at, kind of monitor Airbnb and VRBO platforms, I think also Expedia and those types of things. So that will provide us better insight into how the short-term rental regulations are impacting. We haven't done an analysis as far as looking ahead and what we're anticipating that to look like, but now that-- and now that the OAP revenues, they're not supporting tourism programming in the region, they're supporting affordable housing initiatives. So that would be-- you know, Tourism Couchin has responsibility to kind of keep an eye on that and what's happening moving forward, but ultimately those funds are with kind of Economic Development Couchin and Couchin Housing Association. But yeah, we'll be monitoring that and looking closer at that.
Right, thank you.
Just out there that the province is also collecting that information and will be beginning to share it, but I'm not sure how far they've gotten in that process of sharing that information at this point.
Director Morrison to close.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm hoping that if there's analysis done on exactly that item, that a corresponding analysis of the vacancy rate for rental properties would be done, because I think they're-- they almost go hand in hand. I'll follow Chair's direction and just quickly ask if staff are looking at a timeline for presenting information on not only the 3% increase that's going to be requested, but the additional-- I spoke with Mr. O'Reardon earlier in the week about the relationship between the $120,000 that has contributed through our tourism function and its relationship to additional functions. to additional funding sources. So I'm hoping that at some point in the near future, we can have some analysis on not only the relationship of that $120,000, but projected revenues from this revenue stream and what that 3% impact might be. So I know it's sort of a multifaceted question, and we spoke about it online, but a little bit more detail on the financials would be helpful for us when we're making decisions over this upcoming budget year and the following budget year. So any comment?
Just to note that staff will be meeting with Tourism Couchin to discuss this matter in the coming weeks, so I expect that there'll be engagement with, with the board around this topic coming up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Knight, and thank you, Mr. O'Rearden, for the presentation. We'll now move on to the next item of business, report from the Transit Section regarding the proposed three-year transit expansion plan, 2026, 27 to 2028, 29. Ms. Rhonda.
Thank you. So the purpose of the report before you is to present the BC Transit and CVRD three-year transit expansion plan for 2026 through to 2029. Every year, staff work with BC Transit to develop a three-year transit expansion plan, which the board then endorses as our service expansion request to put forward to the province for their share of funding. The CVRD includes the first-year costs in our corresponding budget and the second and third years in the five-year financial plan. And then we await notification from the province through BC Transit to advise whether our first-year requests for the required corresponding provincial funding were successful, and this happens in the following provincial fiscal years budget. Due to the fleet acquisition timelines, if any of our proposed first-year requests are successful, these would not be implemented until 2027, so there would be no additional funding required in the 2026 budget for the proposed service expansion, but we would be committing funding for the 2027 budget, as noted in the report, subject to receiving the provincial share. Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to move the recommendation? Moved by Director McGonigal, seconded by Director Segal. Any discussion? Call the question, all in favor? An opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Move on to the next report. This is from the Environmental Services Division regarding the Shemanus Watershed Initiative Funding. Mr. Moore.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. This is a fairly straightforward report. When we did the Shemanus flood mapping and flood work, it was primarily funded with a grant from the National Disaster Mitigation Program, and then we had supplemented that with some funding from both North Couchin and from CVRD. So that project ended up coming in a little under budget. We had about $70,000 that we've been holding on to, to look at additional flood mitigation work on the Shemanus. The unfortunate part about the flood mapping and management plan that we had done is that there were no silver bullet solutions that we could immediately put that funding towards. HALALT has been leading a lot of the work on the Shemanus since that time with the Shemanus Watershed Initiative, and they've requested that we put the remaining funding towards that. Through discussions with, with staff at North Couchin, they indicated that it would probably be more appropriate, since some of the funding came from North Couchin, would be to return that portion to North Couchin to decide how best to spend it, and the remainder of the CVRD's portion of about $35,000, the recommendation is to put that towards the Shemanus Watershed Initiative led by the HALALT that we're working on with them, so.
Someone like to move the recommendation? Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director Segal. Any discussion? Call the question, all in favor? An opposed? None opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move on to question period. Question period. Ms. Parnard, I think you're the only one here, and I'm not going to read out the spiel, because you've heard it a million times already, so.
Thank you, Chair. My question is regarding, so follow up to the report on tourism. Stakeholders were mentioned repeatedly throughout the report, and I'm wondering if we have a clear idea of who those stakeholders are and if they include locals moving forward.
Yeah, because there would be the Board for Tourism Couchin Society, and then my understanding is there's a membership list as well, but I would have to defer to staff on that one. I'm assuming Mr. O'Rearden could probably pull the information together and send it to you in an email.
I appreciate that. And do the communities that are represented around this table have a strategy for training up ambassadors for their welcoming committees, so to speak, particularly for wayfinding for visitors as they come in? I mean, we could be talking busloads of people, right? And my question would be, would it be aligned with, so for example, in Shawnigan, the new museum is reopening this weekend, and I received training, wonderful training, to be able to showcase my community, and do the other communities around this table have a plan like that? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any such training initiatives at a regional level, but can definitely check with, with staff and have them include that in the follow-up email.
That would be awesome. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. All right, seeing no other members of the public in the gallery, we'll now move into, yes, we need a motion to move into close. Someone like to move that? Moved by Director Morrison, seconded by Director Justice. Any discussion? All in favor? An opposed? None opposed? Motion carries.